During the meeting, a county board of finance meeting will take place. Any person who requires special assistance or service to attend or participate at the meeting shall call this county manager's office at 1-505-425-9333. This commission meeting was published by the Las Vegas Optic on June 26, 2018, decimated to public stations KFUN, KLBF, KNMX, KMDZ, KBQL, and KMDS on January 25, 2018. Call to order, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Maria Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Rock Uliwari.
Here.
Chairman Chris Nahar.
Here.
Commissioner Arthur Padilla.
Here.
And Vice Chairman Janice Varela.
Just for the record, Janice Varela had called me. She's assigned to the, thank you, to the New Mexico Legislature there in the waning days of their, of the state legislature. Matter of fact, in this week, I think on Friday, she's working the, she's working the legislature, and she's also there to bird out some of our bills. I'm glad that she's there, but she couldn't be here today. This time, could we have Commissioner Uliwari lead us into the panel.
The United States of America, to the Republic of Wichita, Kansas. One nation, one liberty, and justice.
Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
If so, I get a motion to approve. So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to remove the economic development presentation. There's a, they also have a meeting today at the same time, so I'm not going to be able to make it.
Okay. What item is that?
The presenter, the economic development.
Item number two under the presentation, okay. Any objections? All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes by Commissioner Padilla, seconded by Commissioner Uliwari. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minute. Need motion to approval of minutes for the January 9, 2018 regular commission meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Uliwari.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Maria Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we have Mr. Leo with the introduction of new county employees.
Good afternoon, Chairman Nahar, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So today, we have new employees. Lynette Bejil Urioste could not be with us today. Her title is Bureau of Elections Deputy Clerk. She's a probationary temporary full-time employee within the San Miguel County Clerks Division. We have with us our new fire marshal. He's an exempt full-time employee, San Miguel County Fire Services Division, Mr. Andrew Duran.
Bienvenidos. Okay, under, next, we have the public input forum. We have four presenters today. I'm going to, individuals wanting to speak or address the county commission during public input will sign in on the public input prior to commission, or prior to the commission approving the day's agenda. I'm going to ask you to honor the three-minute time limit. We have a pretty heavy agenda today, and we want to work through it, okay? So first of all, today, we have Leroy Pacheco. Right up here, please. Please state your name, and you have three minutes to make your presentation, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Leroy Pacheco. I'm enrolled in the DWI program with the Hispano Chamber of Commerce under the direction of Mr. Manny Martinez, and I just wanted to congratulate Hispano and Manny Martinez for being able to help me out, and I think it's a very beneficial and rewarding program for the citizens of San Miguel County to have the likes of Mr. Manny Martinez in the program, and also Michelle and Yolanda giving us guidance and direction in order for us to complete this program in a very beneficial and rewarding way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Manuel Garcia.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon. Is this working? Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay. Today, I want to talk about that it's better to recycle and reuse. So this is kind of a little bit of a response to San Miguel County's mulling to maybe vacate and abandon more roads, and I talked about recycling. So San Miguel County can save more money and even earn money by recycling, reusing than by abandoning or vacating roads. There are not many roads left to abandon or vacate. San Miguel County had over 800 miles of roads at one time, now about 512. The only roads that should be vacated are those where the road goes through, or a bus, only one property, otherwise property owners will be adversely affected like we were when San Miguel County passed that resolution in 2009. And it's always best to have a petition come in from the landowners. That way, it's really government of the people, by the people, and for the people, instead of the county trying to decide for themselves which roads to vacate without prior consultation of the landowners. In our particular case, the landowners weren't consultant, consulted, the county manager just wanted to vacate that road. So better to recycle and reuse. You can save about $40 per ton on landfilling. I don't know what the cost is in here in San Miguel County, but it's around $40 a ton per month. So you can save multiple thousands per month, save hundreds of thousands per year, and you can make the recycling program win-win-win. The county wins by saving money and even earning money. Entrepreneurs win by starting their recycling businesses, and private individuals win by selling their recyclables, and you can get the younger generation into recycling. San Miguel County cannot expect to be able to landfill in Santa Fe County, Guadalupe County, and Moreau County forever, and at the city dump. Those landfill rates will go up. So if you could imagine 100% recycling, perhaps it's not achievable, but imagine 100% recycling. So there's some counties in the United States and even in New Mexico that are around 80%. How much will that save? You know, here in San Miguel County, that could be $600,000 to $1 million per year. I don't know those facts to be hard and solid, so I requested through IPRA how much money San Miguel County spends each month on paying for landfills at Santa Fe, Wagon Mound, Guadalupe County, and Santa Fe County. So how much could recycling businesses make? Probably quite a bit of money. How much could private individuals make? Probably quite a bit of money. So if you think about tuition, books, gasoline savings, et cetera, and you start with a little kid teaching him to recycle, they could save quite a bit towards college tuition. And so I saw a story on TV on Heroes on CNN where a seven-year-old has recycled 60,000 pounds of plastic. That's 30 tons. This is a seven-year-old. He goes around picking up plastic bottles, some of them are five cents, some of them are 20 cents. So he's got 30 tons. So at $40 per land, for landfill, $40 a ton for landfilling, that's $1,200. So he has saved his county, wherever he's at in California, $1,200, and he has made probably $500 to $1,000 doing that, and he's only seven years old. And so we have all these little kids around here in Las Vegas, and we should recycle. If we're throwing away $160 million a year in value in the state of New Mexico, I don't know what we're doing in San Miguel County. So I've requested those documents through IPRA, and we'll find out how many tons we landfill per month, how much we could recycle, and see what we can do. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, next up, next up is Mr. Joseph Varela.
How's it going, ladies and gentlemen? How you guys doing today? I'm here to talk on behalf of Manny Martinez and the community service and the services that he offers the community as well as being an offender for, and being part of his program, we do clean up a lot, and we do do a lot of recycling, going back to recycling of the talking. I mean, it's, to me, I think it's very beneficiary that he does everything that he does for us and for the community. He's an awesome person, he opts out, and at the same time, while he's helping us out, we're helping out the community as well by cleaning up the roads and recycling, and you know, it's, I've benefited a lot from this program and a lot of the help that I've gotten from Yolanda, Manny, and the whole commission, you know, it's, to me, I think recycling is the key. It's a very important thing to discuss, and it's something that needs to be handled and be done more properly. By Manny helping us out and us helping him in return by cleaning the roads and all that, and cleaning up the trash and all that, it's a double win-win situation. I don't see no loss in this success. I see nothing but positivity, no negativity at all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Varela. Next up is Mr. Floyd Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Manny Martinez here, and he's done a good job, and, well, he's honest, and the DWI commission downstairs, I'm in the progress, I need it on there, and people doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Up next is Mr. Harold Garcia.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Good afternoon, Mr. Garcia.
My name is Harold Garcia, and I'm here on behalf of the New Mexico Public Works affiliate, here to promote the 10th Annual Equipment Rodeo that we are hosting in Socorro County this year. Just to give you a brief history of it, we started this program 10 years ago with the intent to, to help out the blue-collar workers, with the intent to help out the blue-collar workers be able to use their skill in operating equipment and to also be able to learn from one another. As a result, here we are 10 years later, and it's become a very big success. We started off 10 years ago in Hobbs. We travel throughout the state every year. We started 10 years ago in Hobbs with 19 participants, and we ended last year in Taos County with 120 participants. So as you can see, it's grown quite a bit. I'm proud to say that I'm, I'm the founder of the Equipment Rodeo through the Public Works affiliate, and I've, I've been kept on for the last three years as, as a private individual to help them promote it. This year, it's going to be held in Socorro County, in the town of Socorro. We're looking at having a motor grader competition, a front-wheel loader competition, a back-hole competition, and then we, we just got a trailer backup competition, and that's an all-female competition. This year, we're also going to be honoring the New Mexico Children's Cancer Fund. We're hoping that with the donations that our sponsors give us, that we can set aside some money for that so that we can give a donation to the New Mexico Children's Cancer Fund. And here's a, here's a poster that, that is designed exclusively for the rodeo. As you can see, it's all yellow on behalf of the New Mexico Children's Cancer Fund, and so I'd like to leave these posters with the county manager, if I may, and I would encourage that the county consider, consider sending some of your equipment operators to participate in this. Not many, not many times a year do blue-collar workers get to go out. Most of the time, they're busy doing repairs to roads, they're busy taking care of issues within the county, and the rest of the white-collar people are out attending conferences, attending meetings, business meetings, and stuff like that. Well, this gives, this gives an opportunity to the blue-collar worker to get recognized, to sharpen their skill, to be able to share with each other their, their trade in the heavy equipment industry, and it's been a very successful venue. We've had, from San Miguel County, I think we've had four or five different winners. We had one, we have a traveling trophy that we call, it's a traveling trophy that the winning county wins. San Miguel County won it, I think, the third year that we were in to this program, and so there have been some successful stories come out of San Miguel County, so I'd like to invite you to this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garcia. Leave that with the road superintendent or county manager. All right, that concludes the public information. Next on our agenda, we have, under new business, we have a presentation by the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce presenter, Mr. Manny Martinez.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Martinez.
Commissioners, Chairman, thank you, walk down, and David, good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come this, this afternoon to do a little presentation on where the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce has been, where it came from. I won't tell you how it originated because it will make a long story, and I only have 10 minutes or so. I would like to introduce our secretary of the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce, Vinda Lopez, which is registered with the Secretary of State, sitting right here, the vice president Kenneth Pacheco, I'm sorry, the treasurer Kenneth Pacheco, and the vice president excused himself, he had to work today, is Kenneth Pacheco Jr. As a, as a representative of the organization, as the president of the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce, we've been working with, very close with the magistrate judges, with the municipal judges, and we've also worked with the DWI program very close. We've developed a good relationship, friendship with them, that we, at times, and also I've worked with the probation and parole department on their community service. There's times that they call me and ask me, well, we have, I have here a very tough individual that's having a hard time doing his community service. I tell him, send him to me. He'll know what a shovel and a pick looks like, and they've worked out really well with I've also been working with the low-income division of the state of New Mexico. Now they have a program where they actually send them out to work so many hours to get their food stamps and their check. We've been operating as volunteers through this program. We've been pretty much sweating tears, and let's go do this, and let's make it work. So far, it's been working. It's gotten a little tougher, and it's getting tougher, because it's, we've been operating this program merely purely out of wallet, out of our wallets. What I'm doing here this afternoon is asking for financial assistance of whatever kind you can give us. We'd appreciate it greatly. Equipment costs money. I've been using my own trucks. My son has been using his own trucks and trailers, and I think it's about time that after two years of working with the program and volunteering our services, that we get recognized somewhere down the line. Money moves everything. They say money doesn't move everything, but it pretty much does move everything, and that's what we're here this afternoon for. And other things that the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce has been involved in very much is when we go, when our schools go out of, out to Albuquerque to represent us in the state, we're there as the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce, as the city of Las Vegas, representing not only the Hispanics, but everybody else. I tell everybody, don't get scared because it's called Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce. I have a lot of Anglo businesses involved with me already, and they are very happy to be with us. Also, we've participated a lot with the community on a food drive this year. This year, we took it among us to go look for donations from our members and from everybody else. We're able to put food together, boxes of food, turkeys, hams, and so forth, to give to the people that we're most needy in the community. We also participated in the light parade. This is the second time we do it. We give hot chocolate and biscocchitos, and believe me, I didn't think I was going to go through so much hot chocolate than I did, than we did. But thanks to a lot of volunteers that showed up, and thanks to the people that helped me financially put this through. Another thing that we've represented ourselves a lot was, two years ago, it came upon myself that we have never honored the Vietnam veterans, and they fought for us. So I took it upon myself to have a meeting with them, and we designated September 10 of each year to be able to honor them at their memorial park. Last time that we had it, we had representatives come from Wisconsin, Texas, Wyoming, and Colorado, and it was all attended by local representatives from the mayor's office, all the way from the governor's office were represented that came to speak on their behalf. This, now we're looking at working in a tourism program to help the greater Las Vegas area in San Miguel County. We have really no representation out advertising Las Vegas that I've seen in the past 30 years. I was one of the first ones that organized the lodger's tax committee and lodger's tax to make this possible. Or it's gone after I left, I haven't seen very much progress, and we'd like to bring a tourism program back to the Las Vegas and to the county of San Miguel. The Pecos area, the Gajinas area, Rosada, and all those areas have a lot of history that we should forward to the tourists that come looking around Las Vegas with a camera, not knowing what they're taking pictures of. I've taken it upon myself to get down and explain what the buildings were, and, and what they did, and what kind of movies, and they get really impressed, and they say, wow, we didn't know this was here. So in that, I pretty much leave you with, as you can see, that the DWI program wrote a letter on our behalf, the Honorable Judge Eddie Trujillo wrote a letter on our behalf. The magistrate judges aren't, they said they weren't authorized or prohibited to write a letter, that I could talk and write something on their behalf, so I did. And then you see how we operate our chamber. We have a release of liability statement for each individual that comes to volunteer their time. We haven't signed a release statement that we're not liable if they get hurt or, for whatever reason. And then the second other page that you're going, that you see there in your pamphlet would be a, how we keep the time. When a volunteer comes in, starts, and finishes, we log their time in every day. The other page that you look at is one of the presentations that you, that we did that was called Presents a Salute to the Vietnam Veterans, which was a special presentation by some artwork from a gentleman called Harold Schmidt from Wisconsin that was here. He donated that tractor you see in the picture, and that tractor sits in angel fire right now, and it was in this city for three days so people could enjoy his artwork and the beauty of what he created. The next page tells you most, most likely, all our loyal members that are with the Las Vegas Hispano Chamber of Commerce is up to date. The next page shows you that we are a legitimate organization and that we are registered with the Secretary of State in the state of New Mexico, and our current paperwork is up to date with them. The next page will show you that we are registered also with the federal tax and with the tax revenue in the state of New Mexico. I want to again thank you very much for letting me, giving me this opportunity and this time to come and speak for, for a chamber or an organization, whatever you'd like to call it, that has been working and is operating, and we would like you to join us as part of our family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martínez.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. I would like to testify.
Commissioner Uliwari.
Thank you. Some time this summer, we put together, at your another organization that I, that I belong to, a big cleanup from the skating pond all the way past the High Point. I don't know if you've seen High Point, and all the trash that had been dumped out there over the years, but Manny and his crew showed up that day as volunteers. We filled up two 30-yard containers that day in about a half a day and cleaned from the skating pond all the way past High Point, and that was for Hispano Preservation Week. I would totally support with trash bags and real dollars, the return on investment for what this organization does for this community is at least 13%. So I would encourage the manager and the commission to consider supporting the Hispano Chamber of Commerce for the great things they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uliwari. I'd like to thank Manny and his staff for, for the work they're doing now, and also I would, I would encourage the commission to, to look at some way of helping monetarily the program, because I know that they're not rich people that can afford to be donating all their, their money and time to the cost. However, at some point, I think we need to look at a proposal coming from the Hispano Chamber of Commerce as to how we're going to spend the monies, and come back with a proposal so that we can maybe direct the county manager to see if there's any funding for this year, if not for, for next year, that, that might be available to, to help out the Hispano Chamber of Commerce, so that, because I think it's a good program. I think that the only thing that we need to do is, we need to make sure that we justify expenditures, because you've got to realize that it is public monies. So for donations, we need to make sure that we get a proposal and, and then we see some results after that. That's, that's about the only thing I have to say on that. All right, thank you, Chairman.
I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Martinez and, and your volunteers that help you, and I'd also like to say thank you to the gentleman that came and, and spoke about how the program has helped you overcome whatever you're facing. I also would like to say that I, I think we should look at how we can support this program, also with, I agree with Mr., Mr. Vice Chair here, ex-vice chair here, that, you know, we need to have, have it all documented as to how the monies will be spent, because it is public money, and we want to make sure that we're utilizing it in the correct way. So again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
If you want in and I can roll that out to that, Tom. If and when it ever happens.
Do you have to stand up?
The books will always be open for review.
Mr. Martínez. Yeah, so we're on the record, okay?
Yes, sir. I'd like that last comment of Mr. Martinez, and I would like to say for the record that our books are open at any time you want to see them, even though it's been spent from us, but at any time that you people figure that we do have this type of appropriations for these, these type of monies, because gas, shovels, insurance, and all that costs money, the books will be open for you to review at any time. Just give me at least a 24-hour notice, and I'll work with you guys. And I'll work with you guys. We've been working this far, and I want to continue this program. I just want to say a little, one thing that bothered me for like three years. One time I was at a casino there in Albuquerque, and we're playing cards, and this lady goes, where are you from? And I go, Las Vegas. And she goes, New Mexico. And she goes, yes. And that stayed with me since then. I bought a broom, and I've been going to sweep the sides of the street by myself sometimes. Because she goes, everybody's told me what a beautiful townhood, beautiful building you have in Las Vegas. I have a daughter in Colorado Springs. I go by, I never stopped in Las Vegas, New Mexico, once. Never gotten off the freeway. And I did, and she goes, boy, was I impressed with that city. But what a dirty little town. She made me feel about this small. I said, don't we have any pride? Pick up our own trash, sweep our own streets if we have to. Thank you very much again.
All right. Mr. Martinez, because you came to us today in the form of a presentation, we're not really at liberty to allocate any funding. But what I suggest that you do is that we meet in the early spring to plan next year's budget. And we sit down as commissioners with our finance people and see how much we can give to the nonprofits. This last year, we had to cut quite a bit because there was some shortfall. But I suggest that you put together a proposal as to how much you need, how much you're asking for. And the next time you come before the commission, that you get on the actual agenda so we can have it as an action item where we can actually vote whether to give you some money or tell you to get out of here, whatever. We need to do it in that form, okay? I appreciate the effort, your efforts for the community. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have the, we have approval of the Code of Ethics. It was drawn up, we made this after the Code of Ethics from the Taos County Commission. Not necessary that we update our Code of Ethics for commissioners that'll govern the way that we act as commissioners, will keep us in line, okay? And if commissioners have had a chance to review it, it's pretty lengthy. If they haven't, I can go over it. I'd rather not. But if you have reviewed it, commissioners, I need a motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
I'd like some discussion on this.
Discussion, Mr. Udeli.
Thank you. I want first to want to applaud Commissioner Narad for putting us the agenda. We drafted a Code of Ethics almost a year ago that sat in our former council's office for several months, finally brought it back out, it's being reviewed again. And it's about 30 bucks a page. But it's an ordinance. The questions that I have are really for counsel about this particular ordinance. And there are just a couple of, some language in here that I'm not just real clear about. For example, on the fourth paragraph, "Samigo County Commissioners will refrain from any political activities which undermine public confidence in the professional administrators." I'd just like you to define professional administrators and give an example of a political activity.
My role in creating this Code of Ethics was minimal. I did send a notice to the original, and I thought it was inappropriate for this board to go ahead and go on. Essentially, it does not have a definition page to address the issue that you're asking me of. Essentially, you have more using this document than we have the guide. And I think within time, there's questions about interpretation, and this board isn't authorized to make their own interpretation.
Mr. Udeli, for clarification, can I just bring something up before you? What I understand is that the last time that a Code of Ethics was proposed, that it was proposed for employees. Is that correct? And the attorney didn't approve it?
No, it was for the commission, everyone. And it's an ordinance, so it's law and it's enforceable. So that was my question about, one of my questions about this one, enforceability, because it's not a resolution, it's not an ordinance. So what is it exactly? Just like a pledge? A non-enforceable pledge?
I think it's a guideline that all commissioners. Well, first of all, there were two different Code of Ethics. There was a previous one submitted that's that, which applied to employees, which was found not to be appropriate. This is another Code of Ethics, which I understand is brought from Taos, New Mexico, and it offers a guideline, especially for commissioners who are not familiar with the boundaries and parameters. I think it offers a guideline in addition to your IPO conference, your better form public officials, or your meetings with the association of counties telling you what behavior is appropriate, what behavior is inappropriate. Now, these are broad guidelines, and it does not specify exactly what cannot be done. But I suspect that if there is a question about violation of this Code of Ethics, then I would hope to see a procedure developed secondarily to address those issues and to help fill in how the county is going to address those issues.
You referring to the Code of Ethics ordinance that I drafted, you stating that that was reviewed by staff and deemed inappropriate?
I'm not sure if it was yours, but I do know that staff reviewed a Code of Ethics that was suggested to be applied to all the county employees. And there were several concerns, that it violated the current personnel ordinance, that it violated the union contract, that it changed the issues as far as where one is entitled to due process and where one is not. And therefore, the committee did not approve of it.
The committee doesn't write policy, though. Commission writes policy.
I think what you have is, within the whole county, staff develops information, looks at information that is presented to them, and then makes recommendations or submissions before it goes to the board.
Okay, this is just news to me, that's all. Counselor, is manager, we're talking about the same Code of Ethics ordinance?
They're two different documents. The one that you have in your hand is...
I know that, but I'm talking about the ordinance. This isn't an ordinance. So the ordinance that he's referring to, is that the one I drafted last year?
That is correct.
So this is the first I'm hearing of any kind of committee.
There was a committee of employees that have...
I would like to be informed of this, though, because that was the one that I introduced. And when I've asked you about it, you told me it was moving forward, and I haven't been informed of any kind of concerns, which is fine with me, but I'm just kind of surprised that I'm hearing it now for the first time from council.
Commissioner Udeli, a committee was formed to review the Code of Ethics. The committee met, and they made recommendations. And one recommendation was to combine the Code of Ethics with the current personnel policy because of the similarities. But we are still going through that process.
But an ordinance, though, is a law, it's not a policy.
That is correct.
Which has a board. As a matter of fact, it's drafted after the Santa Fe County's Code of Ethics. It's almost verbatim because of the implosion that they had there. And it's really just reiterating what's already state statute.
Commissioner Udeli, if I can interrupt you. So which one are you objecting to? Which one of these clauses?
I'm just asking questions.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not objecting. I'm just...
What I'm suggesting is that this is why I brought it up. If there needs to be amendments, if there needs to be changes, now's the time to let us know. We will go ahead, we can rewrite this. This is why I came up for a vote today. If we need to table it and make adjustments, then that's what we're here for.
Yeah, I just want a clarification from the, from council on enforceability. And he stated that we can come up with some kind of language later. And there were just, you know, one more about integrity in our private lives. And that's one that kind of concerned me about who's going to be the stewards of our private integrity or our personal relationships, it stated.
Turn on your question. Turn to that one.
Let me find it here. When it comes to our personal, professional and personal relationships.
I thought it was the one we're considering.
Okay, on the fourth paragraph, "Samigo County Commissioners should be dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships." I'm just, the personal relationships part, does that mean in my personal, in my private life?
Absolutely not. I would...
It was just that kind of language.
No. The way that is here, it's concerning your professional conduct as a commissioner or as an elected official, any elected. But in this case, directly at a county commissioner.
Yeah, but it says "and" in personal relationships, "in all public and personal relationships."
I see what you're concerned here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The way I see this Code of Ethics, it's just a guideline for a lot of people that are new. Like, I've seen all this, and this is more or less what we go by. This is just a simple guideline that we should be using in our elected official capacity. And that this is not bearing on anything that we're not doing right now, that we're not supposed to be doing. So I think the Code of Ethics is a very good guideline for us to...
I don't disagree at all.
Especially the new commissioners that are coming in that really don't know about the Code of Ethics and how they're supposed to act in public and what they can devolve and what they can't devolve that could get us in a lot of trouble and lawsuits and all that. So I think it is a good guideline, a good start.
It is fine, sir. And I'm not opposing it at all. It was my curiosity, it was enforceability and definitions of the language was my only concern.
Are you satisfied with the explanation? Can we move on, or do you have more questions or more concerns?
I yield.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Martinez? All right. We have the proposal for Code of Ethics and the request to adopt the Code of Ethics. Do we have a motion on this?
I saw one, Mr. Chairman, for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Next on the agenda, we have the manager's report. Dr. Martinez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have a few items to discuss, and then I will open it up for any discussion that you may have. As you're all aware, that last month, we had a major incident in our community. We had a vehicle accident on I-25. It was a 20-car pileup on I-25. We had two casualties and quite a few injuries. So our response to that incident, we mobilized, we had a meeting with all emergency personnel, hospital, you name it. We had about a total of about 25 agencies that we all met together, and we had a very good discussion on what can we do in preparation for the next major incident in San Miguel County. We met for about two hours, and I know there will be, information was sent to the OPTIC, and we'll have something hopefully in the OPTIC soon. One of the issues that was brought up is we have to make sure that we are all on the same page when it comes to responding to emergency incidents. So with the help of Mr. Leo Maestas, he is our emergency manager, we're looking at drafting what we call, it's an MCI plan, Mass Casualty Incident Plan. So we're in the process of putting a plan together, and we will be working with state police, city fire, city police, all county agencies, hospital, you name it, superior ambulance. We'll be working with a variety of agencies to develop a master plan that we can all follow. Once the draft is complete, again, this process will take some time because we have to get all the agencies involved. Once the document is finalized, we will present that to the commission. We will also present the document to city council and also to the village of Pecos, okay? So we are very fortunate in this community when it comes to emergency situations that there is collaboration among all emergency response agencies, including law enforcement and fire. So again, Mr. Leo Maestas, the county and city emergency manager will be coordinating that effort. I also met with Mr. Ted Rayball and Samantha Ortiz concerning the county fair, and the county fair will take place on August the 8th, and it will be a four-day event. So I met with those two individuals, and we've already started the planning process. What they're looking at is hopefully we can bring a rodeo or a ranch rodeo, and they're going to apply for lodger's tax to promote the county fair. Mr. Justin Garcia and staff are right now reviewing the solid waste ordinance, and I know he is on the agenda. And so we're looking at that ordinance and what we can do to make adjustments to better serve the community when it comes to solid waste. Myself and Mr. Alex DeFoya met with Mr. Steve Bernstein. He is working on our comprehensive plan. Right now, he has a draft of the plan for the Pecos area, and we will be working with Steve Bernstein on that comprehensive plan. And hopefully by next month, either in March or April, we will have a presentation by Mr. Bernstein to the commission. Personnel ordinance, we continue to work on that ordinance. Like I mentioned before, we're looking at combining the two documents. Again, that has to be approved by commission, but we're looking at the Code of Ethics and also the personnel ordinance. There was some similarities, and so we're looking at, the concern or the question is why have two documents if we can have everything in one document? But again, we will present that to the commission, and the commission will have a say on, do we keep one ordinance or we keep two? So that information will still be presented to the commission. The next item is an organizational chart. I know you have, that's item, I think that's item number 17 or 18. The main difference on that organizational chart is with Ms. Dawn Kreider. She is the safety officer for the county and also in charge of fleet and buildings and maintenance. Based on my observation, I believe that that's too much responsibility for one individual, and I believe it's in the best interest of the county if we split it. And she is just in charge of safety and the fleet, and John Tierney will be in charge of maintenance and buildings. So that would be, that's the only change, or the only recommendation that I'm making to the organization in charge. At this time, I stand for any questions?
Any questions?
I just don't see where the safety is on your chart. Where? Miss Kreider, she just reports directly to you?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, I didn't find it on the chart. I have no more questions.
Commissioner, Maria? No. Commissioner Martinez? All right, thank you. Mr. Manager, next thing, next item on the agenda is a report on the OPO yard request for proposal. Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I've been working with finance and our procurement officer on this issue. We've gone back and forth with different drafts. The final draft was completed and was published in the OPTIC, the journal. The final draft was completed and was published in the optic, the journal, and the Santa Fe New Mexican. With hopefully a deadline by our next meeting, regular meeting, where you'll be able to consider the applicants and the recommendations of the committee. Right now, I understand we have already three requests for the RFP. Was an indication that they wish to, to apply from different law firms. So it's out there and we're waiting to see what, who responds with what.
Thank you, Counselor. I hope that we can jump on this as soon as possible. Other counties are already filing. You know, Mora County has already filed and, you know, they, they jumped on it right away. Our concern is that, you know, even though Mora County filed, that we, I think we stand a better chance because we actually house our prisoners. And most of our cost will be in detention, I think, and also with the, the medical cost. Thank you. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the poverty summit. To host a poverty summit that will be scheduled March 29th, 2018. And approve Michael Brown at $750 to facilitate the event. Commissioner Leary, please.
So since we first discussed this in, at our, when I returned back from Fort Worth. San Miguel County was listed, I believe, as one of the poorest counties in the nation. So we got out ahead of that news brief and, and it's coming upon us to try to create some kind of plan to lift our community out of poverty. We've been having several meetings. We have a crew, Ylana has been indispensable in this. But we have a new date set for March 29th, 2018 at the United World College. It's a one-day event. They've also been able to find an organization to pay for food for 150 people. So community members, I hope they all show up here and all the, all the nonprofits, both school districts, city, county, whoever can come. And hopefully we've got a lot of community members there to, to try to come up with some kind of long-term plan to address our poverty issues. So I ask that, that this commission approves it. I make a motion to approve.
I, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second it. Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm asking for a motion to approve. Commissioner Leary moves that we approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under item number five, we have a request for our state travel. San Miguel County Commissioners Barack Leary to attend the 2018 National Association of Counties Legislative Conference being held in Washington DC from March the 3rd to March the 7th, 2018. Mr. Leary.
For the record, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, this is the number of reasons why I go to these conferences. Number one, for San Miguel to have a voice at the national level is very important. There's only about four or five Mexico commissioners. There's a 10 NACO and every single county in New Mexico is a member of NACO. One of the big issues, I'm on the Public Lands Committee, one of the biggest issues that comes up every year is the fight over pilt. And it's not a red and blue, it's more like an east and west thing. The counties that don't have any public lands refer to public taxes as a western welfare. So they're constantly fighting. It's not a, it's not an automatic funding. We have to fight for it every year. It means about $800,000 to San Miguel County. The second thing, which I was very concerned about last year, I've, I've served on the immigration task force in Washington DC. And we usually have a discussion right down the middle. And most of the Republicans that I served with are, lived in border states and on border counties and they're very easy to get along with. Last year, there was a, there was a large number of new commissioners who were, were very fearful. And they, they took the conversation to the extreme right, which was, which wasted a lot of time with that county. I wrote a letter to the president of NACO telling him my concerns. So he appointed me as vice chair so we can help contain and run these meetings. I think it's very important because we can send, we can send DC the international voice, how we feel about DACA. And that's not just one county, that's a national voice, I believe. And those votes are always close. And those are two of the reasons I'm going. The third reason, I'm taking a package to meet all our congressmen and lobby our congress, can't even Senator Pierce, because it's not a red and blue neither. We're going to ask for $7 million to build our fire emergency training unit, our first responders training unit. And I'll be lobbying and meeting on the deal. I have all the appointments set. I'm just waiting for this approval.
Comment, Commissioner?
No questions.
All right. Need a motion to approve our state travel.
I so move, Mr. Chairman, for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Padilla. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries. Under item number six, if they can take this in the Planning and Zoning Commission for County Commission District One, it is necessary to appoint somebody to fill the vacancy. Mr. Alex DeFoya.
Commissioner. Just one moment. There's a typo here on the travel, because we, I traveled the second, not the third. I don't know if that matters. Sorry. I'm just DeFoya.
Good afternoon. A vacancy exists on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the County Commission District One, which is Commissioner Leary's district. And in order to have a full Planning and Zoning Commission, we would like to ask that the individual be appointed as a representative for County Commission District One on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a board of county commissioners, board of county commissioners' appointment, so we have no recommendation.
Commissioner Leary, your, your.
I, I recommend Macario Gonzalez.
All in favor?
I so move.
All opposed? Motion carries.
If I may, Mr. Gallagher asked me to read a statement. If I can find it here. Due to the amount of time that I am absent from San Miguel County, it is better for the issues that do come before the Planning and Zoning Commission to have a person present in the community that is willing to serve and is there all the time. I therefore thank you for the opportunity you afforded me to serve my county. I'm confident that Macario will do a great job for the eight months of the year that I am in San Miguel County. I will always be willing to help in any possible way. Thanks again, and I'm looking forward to seeing you guys in April when we return. Pat, and I want to thank Pat for all his dedicated service at the Planning and Zoning Commission. He was fantastic and we would certainly use his, his input when he returns.
Okay. So Macario Gonzalez, I believe he appointed you for, on the Planning and Zoning Commission? By the way, when is the next meeting? I've been asked, wait.
Pardon?
When is the next Planning and Zoning meeting?
We're going to be scheduling that for March 21st, I believe.
March 21st? All right. All right, thank you, Mr. DeFoya. Next item on the agenda is application for number, application number C-CU-20251 telecommunications monopole. Mr. DeFoya.
This is application number CU-0251.
CU?
For a telecommunications monopole. T-Mobile West LLC submitted an application for conditional use permit approval to establish a 25-foot telecommunications monopole on a 100-square-foot parcel. That's within a 69.92 acre parcel tract of land located at 894 Highway 94, Rocheala area. The, our county wireless communications ordinance requires the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the application be considered de novo by the Board of County Commissioners at a public hearing. And upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners will make a decision granting or denying the conditional use permit. The decision has to include the findings of fact relied upon by the county commission and the conditions, if any, are imposed upon the granting of the permit. With that, I'd like to just go over a brief outline of the application. Our applicant is T-Mobile West LLC. 4830 Pan American Freeway Northeast in Albuquerque, New Mexico. The property owner is Jose Gomez, New Mexico Highway 94. In the area known as Peñasco Blanco in San Miguel County, New Mexico. The site location is New Mexico Highway 94, Peñasco Blanco, San Miguel County, New Mexico. And the purpose of the application is for a conditional use permit approval to construct, establish and operate a 25-foot telecommunications monopole with a microwave dish. The document that regulates this item is ordinance number SNC-10-09-2001-PZ relating to and regulating the placement, construction, modification of wireless communication facilities within the exterior boundaries of San Miguel County, New Mexico. The filing fee, $500 and the review fee of $1,500 has been paid. The project comment review letter from New Mexico Store Preservation has been received. There are no concerns. The applicant provided a detailed written statement. The applicant provided a scaled site development plan along with the applicant name, address and telephone number and the co-applicant name, address and telephone number. The property deed and the proposed lease have been provided. Photosimulations of the tower, what it would look like on the site have been provided. An onsite simulation test was conducted. Public notice of the test was issued. The FCC license was provided, propagation map indicating the coverage was provided. The tax map and the parcel identification was provided. A site plan was provided, effective properties list was provided. Existing towers within 1,000 feet, there is an existing AT&amp;T tower to the north of the proposed site. The tower is designed for additional antenna, there was an additional antenna statement provided, excuse me. There will be no additional towers to be built within two years. And the applicant has submitted his, their San Miguel County business license. Those are 15 items that are required by our ordinance and the applicant met all those items. Some additional items, we had comment review by the Mora-San Miguel Electric Cooperative. There were some concerns. The applicant, Mr. Pacitas is, there he is. Richard met with representatives of the Mora-San Miguel Electric Cooperative and addressed their concerns. We requested comment from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. They had no concerns. Historic Preservation Division of State of New Mexico also reviewed the application. So the action that's being requested of the Board of County Commission today is provided under the county ordinance And that requires the application for the conditional use permit be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at a public hearing. And that's what we're asking for, public, that the Board of County Commissioners conduct a public hearing. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners would do two things, make, and render its decision to either grant or deny the conditional use permit. The decision has to include the findings of fact relied upon by the county commission. And then not later than 20 days after the conclusion of the public hearing. The decision needs to be reduced to writing and then served to the applicant by certified mail. We also provide that decision to adjoining property owners. Of course, we don't know what the decision is going to be, so we couldn't prepare the, the, the written format that we would use. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, we would ask for the Board of County Commissioners to hear anything the applicant might have to say and then also conduct a public hearing and get public comment from individuals who are in favor of the application or opposed to the application.
Mr. Leary asking that we conduct the public hearing today at this time? Okay. All right. Anybody oppose that? Mr. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to square in ahead of time. Anybody who's going to participate in this hearing?
Anybody giving testimony, presenting?
Including the applicant, anybody who would just comment or offer information.
With a show of hands, who's going to be testifying today or presenting? With a show of hands?
So I don't want anybody who's going to be, those who are showing hands, please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, say your name. Who's ready to talk to? In my presentation to the governing body for county commissioners.
All right.
I didn't see the applicant. Is the applicant here?
He is, after correction.
Okay.
Thank you for your staff report and County Manager Martinez.
I'm going to state his name for the record.
County Commissioner?
I'm sorry, would you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Richard Horcasus.
Okay.
I'm a contract employee with Ramon and Associates and I work out of the T-Mobile office in Albuquerque.
Yeah.
So we're here for, for approval of a 25-foot wooden pole with a two-foot microwave dish on it. And it's in the area of Highway 94 where it just north, where it turns off to Highway 105. It's a 25-foot wooden pole. We designed it as a wooden pole to blend in with the natural surroundings of the, of the trees in that area. It's right next to the tree line off of Highway 94. And so we've read the staff report and we agree with, with the staff recommendations. We submitted a complete application some time ago. The fee was paid in August 2017, so it's been a long time getting here. The meaning of the microwave dish is to connect radio and radio signals from the existing 100-foot tower that's just west of the Rocheala post office. So in the area of the 100-foot tower, the big tower, there's no fiber optics telephone lines in that area. And so the microwave signals is going to travel through the line of sight to this two-foot microwave dish and connect with the fiber optics telephone lines that are in that immediate area. So that's the meaning, that's the purpose of putting this antenna, the microwave dish, in that area. What it also does is it brings, we wouldn't be here if there wasn't a demand for the service. So what it does is it brings stability to the, to the telephone, to the cellular wireless service and stability to the 911 emergency services. So where, where your area is growing, more folks are using more gadgets. This is to assist in making sure that those gadgets all are in use. There's good communications in the area. So we, we appreciate your, your consideration and ask for approval. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the gentleman? All right, thank you, sir. Next, anybody else? Is anybody else speaking on behalf of this proposal? Anybody else? Anybody opposed? Mr. DeFoya, what is your recommendation?
Excuse me?
Your recommendation? Your recommendation to?
We would like to see this approved.
All right.
It meets all the requirements of our telecommunications ordinance, our wireless communications ordinance. The applicant provided all the information that we requested. We conducted an agency review from the appropriate agencies, and I think those are findings of fact that could be used to support a decision to approve, if that is your decision.
Mr. Counselor, you commented?
Proceeding, we are on the correct route. This will be the final decision made as to the application.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, there's no opposition testimony?
No opposition?
No, there is no opposition. We did have one telephone call from an adjoining property owner just to ask how tall the tower would be. We provided notice, but that's what he wanted to know, and I guess he was okay with that.
All right, Mr. Chairman? I live in the immediate area, and there's a real need for good cell service in that area. As a matter of fact, we barely get a radio station there, so, I mean, we're in an area where, I don't know, it's like a dead area there, so, any type of cellular communication help is greatly appreciated. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposal.
A second.
Motion made by Commissioner Padilla, seconded by Commissioner Laveney, to approve the conditional use permit on application CU-0251. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Under item number eight, economic development initiatives, planning and zoning, Mr. Alex Tapoya will be the commission on the economic development initiatives in San Miguel County. Mr. Tapoya?
In discussion with the county manager in regard to some of the items that county staff worked on, some of the items actually are economic initiatives, and he suggested that we provide a short information presentation on at least four of the initiatives that the county is working on now with applicants and has worked on. So, that's the purpose of this. It's for information only. The purpose of this, if I may, the purpose of this short presentation is to provide some brief information on projects that are presently underway in San Miguel County and a few that are already in place. These are not projects initiated by the county. Rather, these are projects initiated by individuals who are bringing economic development to San Miguel County. These are economic development initiatives that the county has direct involvement with the applicants, no outside interest or organizations assisting. Essentially, these are economic development initiatives being introduced to the county by the small business person and by the large company as well. They are job creation activities of various forms, gross receipts and income generating activities, and property tax revenue generating activities. Small businesses inject new competition. They operate locally, and they hire local people, and they can be started by anyone. The Small Business Administration reports that small businesses stimulate economic growth by providing employment opportunities to people who may not be employable by large corporations. San Miguel County, through the Planning and Zoning Office and in consultation with the county manager as appropriate, has been involved with economic development activities of various nature and in various ways, primarily the permitting process, either by approving a conditional use permit or by issuing home occupation permits. So, today, we're going to briefly discuss four economic development initiatives that are before the county and various stages of the required application or which have been approved. I'd also say that not all economic development activities are glamorous in nature, and I think we've seen that, and not all economic development initiatives are easily accepted by the public. The first one is our PNM solar facility. About a year ago, PNM contacted the county in regard to permitting a 10-megawatt solar facility on a 100-acre parcel of land on State Road 250, which is also called Airport Road. And we were contacted for two things. First one is PNM needed an easement from the county to be able to access a location, which is next to the County Public Works Facility. We brought that easement document to the Board of County Commissioners, and the County Commission granted an easement to PNM. And second, PNM wanted to apply for the appropriate permit, which in this particular case was a zoning development permit for a project. At that time, it was an $18 million project. The zoning development fee was $8,500. The property is within the extraterritorial zone. It's zoned agriculture, and a public utility is a permitted use. So, because of that, we did not have to go through the conditional use permit process. Construction on the project has not started, even though it's been a year. The county was recently contacted by PNM about two weeks ago in regard to a change in the project. So, county staff and PNM representatives met with the county manager, and we were informed by PNM that the company wanted to double the size of the solar facility. It will now be a 20-megawatt facility on 200 acres of land, that same land located on Airport Road, with a construction cost of $36 million. Actually, it's 36.2. The project will not need water or sewer or generate solid waste. It's clean energy and a clean operation. There will be a few construction jobs and purchase of materials locally during the construction portion. The main benefit to the county will be clean energy and an increase of property tax revenue. So, we asked in the Mexico Department of Taxation and Revenue Property Tax Division for an estimate of what the property tax revenue might be, and at present, we don't have an exact property tax revenue figure until after the project is completed, because the property tax division will send someone out to assess it. But a preliminary estimate is in the range of $344,000 per year, and if I remember correctly, the current property tax paid on that is $18 a year. This will be the second PNM solar facility in the county. The first facility is a 5-megawatt solar facility located on 50 acres on North 7th Street. Property tax revenue generated from that is approximately $224,000 per year. The county gets a third of that. The rest of it goes to the schools. I'd also like to mention that we have another solar facility in the county, and that's on a 10-acre tract of land, just sort of northwest of the County Public Works Facility. And this facility is a Moro San Miguel Electric Cooperative solar facility. So, when PNM completes this next facility, most likely in April sometime, end of April, we will have three solar energy facilities in the county. The next initiative is called the Safeway Automotive and Ignition Interlock Company. This is an example of a small business initiative. It's a two-person operation. Recently, Safeway Automotive, which is an ignition interlock company relocated from within the city of Las Vegas to the Sheridan area. And due to the logistics of the project, the county issued a home occupation permit. Essentially, at that time, it was a one-person operation utilizing less than 600 square feet of building space on an 8-acre tract of land. It's just big enough to install ignition interlock systems on one car at a time by appointment only. So, what's happened is Safeway Automotive recently submitted a second application for conditional use permit approval to expand into car sales as well. We're reviewing that application now. If it's approved, this economic development initiative will employ two individuals. It'll generate additional gross receipts. It's primarily going to be an online sales operation, sort of like an online auction type thing. We're in the initial stages, we just received it last week, of reviewing the application for such items as emergency access, parking, water source, and the appropriate state of New Mexico licenses. They'll need an auto license, an auto dealership license issued by the Mexico Motor Vehicle Department. We do, when we receive applications, we do verify with the Environment Department, Department of Motor Vehicles, different agencies that we need to, we do verify that these individuals have their appropriate licenses. Sand, gravel, and other products. This was application number CU-0249, and this was an application for a conditional use permit approval to establish a sand, gravel, and other product sales lot in the Pecos area on the property belonging to Gregos Food Market. This economic development initiative is utilizing the location of a previous business establishment that relocated to another area of Pecos. They sell a variety of natural materials and employ two individuals. The applicant had some problems preparing the application, which required several reviews by our office, and not everyone's a paper person. But we got it in its final stages. The application went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's currently in operation. Last one is, I think, a very interesting economic initiative, and it's called Cela Vie in Rose. It's not a perfume. And three individuals, I asked them if they could be here, who are involved in this project are Evelyn Young, she is the owner, Iber Ariánez, who is the office manager, and Elaine Rund is the general manager. And the reason I asked them to be here is because this type of application does not go before the Board of County Commissioners, according to the ordinance. Only goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, this may be your only opportunity to meet and listen to these individuals, and I've asked them if they could say a couple of items in case I probably missed most of it. But this particular initiative is a bold and exciting economic development project, in my opinion. The county was initially contacted in November 2016. Now, some of these applications take time, especially when you do them well, and they turned in probably, you know, we've had many applications over the years, and there's maybe just two or three that really stand out, and theirs is one of the two or three that really stand out. The county was contacted in November 2016 by representatives of Cela Vie in Rose in regard to the development of the old Native American Indian prep school property, which is located in the vicinity of the Ilfield area. The process between the county and Cela Vie in Rose thus far has been in regard to the requirements of the conditional use permit process and the type of application materials that are needed, that needed to be provided for the type of economic business initiative proposed. We also briefly discussed the county's LITA ordinance and the New Mexico LITA Act over the course of the past, you know, 14 months. The property is approximately 1,614.027 acres, more or less, consists of various buildings that were part of the former Native American Indian prep school and which initially, it was initially constructed as the Pecos River Learning Center Ranch back in, I believe, in the early 80s, late 70s. What's being proposed at this location is a 56-guest-room hotel, restaurant facility, a convention center, various office buildings, horse stables, a 4,500-square-foot event center, two tennis courts, a swimming pool, and direct access to the river. Economic benefits to the county for this project will include, of course, additional gross receipts tax, some lodgers tax, and as many as 40 full-time jobs when it's in full operation with an estimated yearly earnings of approximately $20,000 per year. This project will be, will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and approval in the next few weeks at our large commission meeting. And with your permission, if the applicants have anything to add to that, it's going to be, this project is going to be utilizing existing buildings that are there that have, some of them have fallen into disrepair. They've already spent a substantial amount of money remodeling and doing repairs to some of the buildings. And from a planning and zoning standpoint, we're excited to have this application in our gobby little hands.
Have anything to say? Anything to add?
We've had several meetings, working with them to develop the application. It's just gotten better and better, the whole project, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add?
We just decided to, we do have great property, and we're looking back to life. This is our goal, our own people, and a nice facility to contribute to, and people come to San Miguel County.
People are in education, and people are busy.
Would you like to get up to the microphone, please? I'm having trouble on this. Thank you.
And we're trying to give you, and I'm trying to, so it's a little bit hard for us to really say what we feel, but to open a resort and a spa here in New Mexico, especially in San Miguel, and to make this old Indian school again vibrant, okay? And having activity and people who can have jobs and money to go to Santa Fe and can work at the ranch would be wonderful.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Tapoya?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapoya. Item number nine, approve and ratify subgrant application FEMA-4197 GR New Mexico, PW27, between New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management in San Miguel County. Mr. Mayesta, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager, this is my, Ms. Beal. OEM would like to request approval to ratify and accept the subgrant agreement FEMA-4197 PW27 between New Mexico Homeland Security Emergency Management and San Miguel County in an amount of $796,935, with a federal share of $597,070.13, with both the state and county shares of $99,511.69. This grant is awarded to the county to replace the bridge or to repair a bridge in San Miguel, New Mexico area that was severely damaged during the floods of July through August of 2014.
Questions or comments from the commission? Anybody? We have a request to approve this subgrant, a motion to approve?
It's for information, please.
No, it's a request for approval. Request for approval, and need a motion to approve?
I'm also to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Martinez, seconded by Commissioner Padilla. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayesta. Item number 10, pretrial district reform from Mesa County, Colorado.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman, Commissioners, today I'm going to give you a presentation on a model that I know Commissioner Ulobe has seen and had a presentation on. I'm going to really give you some information, something to digest. As New Mexico moves down the criminal justice reform path, we're going to have to look at other models. other models, to really look at those people we put out in the community in such a rapid amount of release and arrest. This model is one that has been successful, nationally recognized, and in talking with them, they're really eager to share their pitfalls, their challenges, as long as, and their successes. So, just to give you a little bit of background, New Mexico changed their laws last year, their rules. So, we went from a bonding system to a no bond system, which means that we put offenders back in the community dependent upon a risk category. Colorado went through the same thing, but their process has been years in the making, and I'll go through that in my presentation. But they really looked at that model, they were a bonding state as well, went to a no bond, but really developed their own risk assessment as they moved through the model, and they really focused on a small county in Colorado, Mesa, Colorado, as the pushing force to prejustice reform, and on a national level, they're looked at as partly one of the best models in the country on prejustice reform. So, who is Mesa, Colorado? Their county seat is Grand Junction, Colorado, this is where their program is housed, their county jail, they income about 33,000 miles, and I'll go through San Miguel as a comparison, we're 27,000 in population, we're 47,415 miles in square miles. Detention center, average daily population Mesa, Colorado, 432, San Miguel County's 106, probably of those, probably ninety if we are San Miguel counties, the other are contracted inmates. Their detention center is 440 beds, that's a number that really keep in the back of your mind, 440 beds. Their criminal justice service program, and this is what I'm presenting on, has 626 individuals in that program. So what does that mean? A percentage of those folks would be incarcerated, and that's really the model we look at. What do we do with those people if we're not going to, if we're not going to keep them in jail? What are we going to do with them? As their motto says, one less victim, one less crime, safer community. So how is this oversight of this community justice system? It's really seventeen agencies working together to ensure that this process works. They have the chief judge of district court, they have their county justice magistrate judges on board, their deputy director of the defense council, the public defender, the county sheriff, the chief probation, probation department, the district attorneys, then they have a director of the services, an analyst that really looks at their data and puts that in motion, and then a local coordinator that really runs these meetings and looks at it. So it encompasses a lot of agencies. What has New Mexico formed? They formed a criminal justice committee in each district in the state, that's molding their own policies and their procedures on how to look at this. So New Mexico has kind of set the ball in motion to mirror this, we just need a few more members in that committee, the deputy commissioner, and some magistrate judges to really bring that board and to pull fruition. So how long has Mesa, Colorado been working on this? Since 1971. So I really looked at this model, did a lot of research, and they had a head start, forty-seven years, they've been working at it. What if they started with ten people in work release that were housed in the jail, they go out to work release every day, and then they, and they come back to the jail. In 1981, they said, you know, this is working pretty good, how about we develop a community custody program, where we can look at different things on how to get these people in the community and get them out of the jail. And in 1981, they expanded that to forty clients, work out in the community instead of jail. This whole time, they're looking at their jail, their jail's about 150 beds, I couldn't get actual numbers on how big it was back then, but in 1992, they opened a brand new jail. And their numbers of incarceration grew, and they were really saying, wow, we built the jail, and you know what? That old saying says, build it and they won't come? They built it and they will come. So they were really stuck on, what are we going to do now? We just spent all these millions of dollars on a new jail, it's already overcrowded, what are we going to do? So they looked at day reporting, they looked at pretrial services, getting people out of jail, through the courts, and they thought, oh yeah, we're giving these people out, we're not doing anything for them, they have places to live, those types of things. So they actually developed a seventy-two bed residential facility. So now they're working with these people, those that needed to be monitored, that didn't have a place to go, live in this seventy-two bed facility. Between 1999 and 2007 is when the real pushing in jail populations and challenges happened, but their programs were working, were successful. These people were offending, reoffending last, they were getting through the pre-attentation process, they were showing up to court, so they expanded that from seventy-two beds to 212 beds, and really expanded that program to about 400 people. In the meantime, their jail crowding continued, and in 2013, they had to expand their jail by another housing unit, went to 440 beds, and after forty-seven years, those ten people went to 626 people in the community. Pretty good process. So what is their community justice services made up of? Community corrections, community-based services, and treatment services. Now, all of these services are fee-based services, in other words, you don't get it for free. There's a charge for every element of this, and people pay their way, and that supplements the cost of program. So what's in community corrections? That's the residential facility, 212 beds. Many of them, those individuals would have went to prison, but were sentenced to this facility where they can get treatment, employment services, case management. There's folks that coming out of prison, coming out of jail, are going to this program, and their goal of that is to really transition back to the community while reducing future criminal behavior. They also have a non-residential component that orbits community custody, where they're actually checking their home, check unemployment, they live in independent living apartments, they have GPS monitors for substance abuse monitoring, they do have a curfew, and they do run support groups in communities. So that's the community corrections. Their community-based services, these are all folks that aren't in residential, aren't monitored, but they're still need some type of support. So they do electronic monitoring with these folks, they day report, so every day they come in and check in, doing okay, what do you need? Maybe further judgment and sentencing they're going through, they're successfully complete, then part of their adjudication sentence is diminished. They have substance abuse tests there periodically, they're part of pretrial services, which means they get case management and counseling, and then they're part of what they call a useful public services program. So these people go out into the community if they don't have work or on the weekends, they're giving back to the community with trash pickups, painting, you name it, they're giving in community. So these are the folks that do it. And then the last part of that is the treatment services piece of this justice services, and this is really focused on domestic violence, sex offender treatment, life skills, substance abuse treatment, problem-solving skills, cognitive restructuring, changing the mind of the individual, and really dealing with their anger management. So that treatment piece is given to all these people who are involved in the program. So how are these folks selected for the program? They have, like I said, a Colorado pre-assessment tool, they've used several models throughout the year, out the years. Colorado actually developed this, they've used it for the last two years and are actually going through the validation process. Once it's validated this year, which means that it's going to be an assessment tool that other agencies and other people can use, and it's really a risk assessment. Are we putting the right people in the right programs, and their likelihood to reoffend is dealt with? They've had some really good successes with this program. Average annual bookings, 53,000 people a year, eighty percent of those bookings go through this pre-assessment guide, so they have some great data so that can be validated. So what has been the community impact of having 626 people in the community instead of jail? It's actually been a positive. They've increased their population from 2011 to today by twenty-five percent, with only a four percent increase in crime. That's a huge number. And this is why, because their appearance rate in courts are higher in the program than no program. So if you're in the program, eighty-six percent will show up to court, if you're not in the program, only twenty-eight percent show up to court. Law-abiding rates, which means reoffending in crime, if you're in the program, only sixteen percent of the population commits new crime, and if you're not in the program, only thirty-eight, thirty-eight percent committing new crime. In San Miguel County, we have a fifty-four percent reoffending. So even their, ones in not program are doing better than we are. So we need to do something to help. So what's the cost to operate a program of this magnitude, and what they've developed over forty-seven years? So just to give you something in perspective, their average daily population in the detention center too big, was 476 inmates. Their annual budget's $8,730, roughly, and their cost per inmate's $50.25. If you look at the average population in the program, it's 626, costing $766,000 to operate at $29.61 per inmate. So if you look at, what's the difference? What would it cost to incarcerate probably about 200 of these individuals? They're saving in bed days and dollars about a million and a half a year in incarceration rates by running the program. Yes, they're spending, it looks like they're spending a lot of money, but they're actually saving their taxpayers' money, because if they didn't have this program, they will be building more beds, because they're putting them in bed, in jail. So some historical data, and this is kind of where they've gone, where they've been. So in 2007, their detention center costs were roughly around $7,295 inmates. In 2018, they jumped to 476 inmates. Kind of a trend upward, that's normal, that's what corrections is seeing, but if you look at their budget, in 2007, it was costing them about $67 a day versus in 2018, where it's $50 a day. Why is that? You become more efficient in cost as your detention center grows, and you meet those bed days, the total beds in the facility, you actually become more efficient in cost, it costs you less per inmate, and that's what they're seeing. On the vice versa, their community program in 2007 was $29.61 a day, today it's $29.61 a day. So their economy and scale, although the program is 25 percent since 2007, the cost for any has stayed the same, which means that your treatment services in the community are relatively the same cost with bigger and safer communities. So again, this program is nationally recognized through the National Association of Accountants, the National Institute of Corrections, your pretrial justice institute, and the Association of Prosecuting Attorneys as being the model program in the nation when it comes to pretrial release and community services. Do you understand for any questions?
Mr. Chairman? What do you mean, the population that we have here? I mean, we're a small population. Is something like that, like this viable for a small city like ours? I mean, we've been losing population overall throughout the county, especially in the city. Is something like that viable for, cost-wise? Because it's always about the money. I mean, is it going to really, really, at the end, affect us that much in a small county like ours, as far as population?
As far as population, because our jail has not met that overcrowded population, we won't see the same cost benefit if our jail was at that population reach of beds. We're averaging 106, we have 154 beds, so we actually need growth. But what it does help us do is, we have the idea, we've already built a transition center onsite, and as we move in gear to, what does that look like? What, who are the offenders we're putting in there, and what, who are we going to team up with in the county as far as community services? How are we going to team up with that? And what can we learn from a big model and pick and choose those things that are working right? I think that's where our benefit is. What treatments are working, what are their successes, and can we focus on that and utilize our community services to really help us get there? And I think that's the biggest benefit of looking at this model, really looking at their assessment tool. That risk assessment will help us put folks in the right type of treatment, and I think that's where our benefit comes in, looking at this model. And what it costs us per day, that's something I'll have to come back and show you at the time that, you know, it's right for me to move on.
Have we been able to do any, any type of assessment as to, for this program that we have now in place is working? I know that we do have the program in place already, at least a partial of it, and is there any measurement that we could guide ourselves with as far as, or is it too soon yet?
It's actually too soon to guide and to really give you some success data. We are tracking the population, we are tracking what programs we're offering currently. That success will come two, three years after release, or we see them in the community, have they reoffended after two, three years? Have they received an education? Are they still sober, they still in their sobriety and doing well? Those are the successes that we'll see down the road. Now, we do have one success so far that we've tracked in the community, he's the only one that came back and to receive counseling, so that's a one-year success person who is in college right now and doing very well, and we'll track his success. But as we move, right now, we have eleven people in the program, and they're programming every day. We're looking at different models to use within the facility that can be in the community and are offered in the community, and as we see those people move through the system, we'll be able to come back and give you success rates.
And what about the other programs that we, I think Commissioner Ulobe had suggested, or we have started training for heavy equipment at the site? I'm not saying that specifically we have to go that route, but some type of training for the inmates, so when they come out, they have their profession in some type of job. Are we looking at that, or is something that we weren't able to do at that time?
We are looking at that, and it was very successful. The one successful person we had did go through that program, so we are in communications with the Human Community College, and we will continue to go down that route. The beauty of our community is we have the further educational components to really help these folks be successful. It's... It's, it's how we team up and how we deal with their, getting them sober and, and keeping their, their reoffending rate down. And that'll be our success.
Warden L, will I have a question? Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to speak to Commissioner Padilla. We did a test run with the simulator. And, and as soon as he said, we've been tracking one very successful. He completed that in jail, left, went to Luna, finished his accreditation, and has been flying on Cloud Nine ever since. But that was a, it was a test run with that model, so there's not one of those simulators in the jail now, but it was certainly successful.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is this something that the county might look at?
I believe so.
I mean, purchasing and, and actually utilizing it for that purpose?
The county practice, Luna, Luna said that they will maintain it and do have I C work on it.
Because I think it's a, I would, I would think that would be a very important prospect for us to look into because I think that's part of the problem that we have recurring crime. A lot of people don't have anything to go to. And once you get them trained, there's companies that are out there that are hurting their, or employees of that type. So that's something that we, we should continue to look at and maybe, even if it's going to cost the county a little bit to, to do it, we should get on the program and do it. So, yes.
Mr. Warden, the question I have, under the Mesa model, and you have a community custody program, and would that require you hiring possibly probation, hiring your staff, hiring probation officers, treatment specialists, social workers to assess these people before they're released to the community custody program? And probation officers to possibly monitor, monitor them in the home? I know that under the drug program, we had, we did have to hire somebody through the court to go actually look into refrigerators and things like that, and we're having problems with the DWI offenders. Would you have to hire additional personnel to fulfill those needs?
If we went to do this district community corrections model, yes, you would have to develop a, a department that's community corrections, and, and they would monitor these folks and work hand-in-hand in, in the community. It, it all depends on the model we build. If, if we're going down the treatment path with a handoff to community services, then that won't be necessary. Currently, we have eighteen people who are monitored on, under GPS monitoring in, in the community, and we work in coordination with the District Attorney's Office. So we're already down that path to community monitoring, and, and that's really been pushed upon us through the, the no bond in court because now they're, they're out there in the community with no bonds, yet they're, they're, they're monitored through GPS, which makes our community safer.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Libery?
I want to, I want to extend my thanks to the manager and, and our warden for, for getting on this. I went to the Safe and Secure County Symposium three years ago, and they showed me all this data, and it was all data-driven. It was pretty impressive. I've been asking the manager, and not these two, others, to look into this model and see how it could fit. And I thank you for doing all that research and looking into it. The biggest, I guess, barrier, as far as the district judge, how he explained to me in Colorado, he said it's getting everyone at the table, and said it's like herding cats, you know, because the judges are the gatekeepers here. So I'm hoping that we're successful in, in getting a committee together and getting all the shot callers at the table to see what kind of model might be able to fit. Because if we're, if we're paying for services at half the cost of a bed, that's, that's savings. And the return on investment, like you said, in a few years, if the reoffender rate goes down, the reincarceration rate goes down, and, and that's what all the data shows for this model in Mesa, I think that would, that would be a great thing for San Diego County. Thank you for all your work.
Mr. Chairman, and I think the payoff for the county and, and the citizens at the end would be the savings in not having so many of our own people in there and renting the spaces out. Because that, that's where the real savings is to the county in, in actual funding. So, so yeah, I agree that we, we need to have programs in place for our area.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Item number eleven, resolution number one-dash-thirteen-dash-eighteen-dash-HR-01, addition of Zandero-Zorro a newly private road that will be added to the official nine-one-one road list in San Miguel County. Mr. Trujillo?
Chairman, Commissioners Dr. Martinez. During a routine address request from a property owner in San Miguel County, it was discovered that there are three address structures on a single road located off the county road B-60 in Pecos, New Mexico. Per San Miguel County ordinance, number SMC-071399 or dash two, section four dot one dash C, proposed to San Miguel County Board of Commissioners, please you will take appropriate action on road naming for any private road that provides access to three or more buildings and requires a name in order to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Zandero-Zorro has been determined to be acceptable by San Miguel Rural Addressing Staff per San Miguel County ordinance, and because this is an existing situation, the one-hundred-dollar fee has been waived. We're asking for the approval of road name Zandero-Zorro.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Chairman, it's just out of curiosity, I was going to ask him a question, no?
Yes, sir.
Is there any meaning behind that particular name?
I've never heard Zandero.
What does it mean? I mean, what?
I have no idea. Zorro probably revolves around.
You know, I was just wondering.
Name Diego typically is how I've seen it referenced. So who knows? I know you brought up a question on Mesito out in the Apache Springs area, and I asked about that, and they mentioned that that name was just Little Mesa.
Little what?
Little Mesa. I know you asked about Mesito Road one a couple of meetings back, but no idea. Mario does a real good job of picking names appropriate for the locations. So I'll ask him about it, and I'll get back to you next minute.
All right. A motion to approve?
Zandero is passed.
All in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number nine, ratifying FY nineteen memorandum of understanding to San Miguel County DWI program and Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. Cruz?
Thank you. Yolanda Cruz with the San Miguel County DWI program. And I apologize, I think I usually just go to the year prior's request that I submit, and it should be approved instead of ratified. I, I changed the year, but I didn't change that language, sorry.
Libery?
But I'm here today, the next three items, because we're in the process of writing our grant for next year's funding for the DWI program. And if you remember from previous years, we are required by the state of New Mexico and New Mexico Department of Finance and Authority and Administration to get some paperwork signed from you guys and approved from you so that you know that we're applying for the funding. One is the memorandum of understanding between the DWI program and the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, just kind of spelling out the roles, saying that, you know, we will continue to serve our community, comply with requirements, and HIPAA and privacy, and also to make sure that we keep our client records and keep those confidential. So that's the memorandum of understanding that I'm presenting, and then I have two more, but I think they're all separate items.
Your motion to approve? memorandum of understanding? Moved by, moved by Commissioner Padilla, second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number thirteen, approve and adopt resolution number DWI two-dash-thirteen-dash-eighteen authorizing the county of San Miguel to submit an application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division to participate in the local DWI grant and distribution program.
And this, this one is correct. So this one is also required by the state of New Mexico and Department of Finance and Administration. And what this says is that it's a resolution. Would you like me to read the resolution?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you like me to read the resolution? With all the whereas's and whereas's?
Yeah, go ahead and read it. I have it.
A resolution authorizing the county to submit an application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division to participate in the local DWI grant and distribution program and delegating authority. Whereas the legislature enacted section eleven dash six A dash one through eleven dash six A dash six, NMSA nineteen-seventy-eight, as amended to address the serious problems of driving while intoxicated DWI in the state. And whereas a program is established to make a grant and distribution funding available to counties and municipalities for new innovative or model program services or activities to prevent or reduce the incidence of domestic abuse related to DWI, DWI alcoholism and alcohol abuse. And whereas the county DWI planning council and other governmental entities' approval must be received in order to apply for grant and distribution funding. And whereas the county, along with participating agencies, is making application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division for program funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of San Miguel County that the county chairperson on behalf of the county and all participating entities is authorized to submit an application for distribution and/or grant fiscal year 2019 program funding under the regulations established by the local government division. And then it's just moved, seconded, approved, and adopted by the governing board, so.
Motion to approve resolution?
So movement, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Need a motion, sir? Second. Motion by Commissioner Padilla, second by Commissioner Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, statement of assurances for local DWI grant and distribution program for FY nineteen.
Thank you. This is a longer document. It's eighteen points of assurance that we will run the program and adhere to all procurement codes, financial accounting, reporting requirements, conflict of interest, what happens to funds that we don't utilize, all of those things. So all of this language is boilerplate language that's sent to us by the DFA. And you have a copy of that. I don't know if you have questions. I don't want to read eighteen bullets unless you want me to. Three pages.
Our recommendation is to, my motion to approve this DWI grant and distribution program. Motion by Commissioner Padilla, second by Commissioner Libery. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen, request to award contract service agreement for diesel-powered heavy equipment. Do you have one more?
No, I just want to thank you and also to say that, you know, again, we are in the process of writing the grant. We've gotten input from our planning council, but if there's any input or questions that anybody has, not just from the commission, but from the public, they're welcome to stop by the office, and we, we'd love to have as much input as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, request to award contract services for diesel-powered heavy equipment in light duty gasoline maintenance and repairs. Mr. Madrid?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Brief background to this is last summer, we lost our longtime heavy diesel mechanic, Mr. Tom Greer, decided to retire and go out of business. So we put out an RFP, and we changed it a little bit so that we could incorporate all of our gasoline-powered vehicles also for the county. Anything from a big truck, bulldozer, to just one of our regular office vehicles. And the results were we got two proposals. They were from DAG Enterprises and Martinez Diesel Automotive. We negotiated both contracts to be about the same hourly rate, which is about seventy dollars an hour for mechanic services during regular hours, eighty dollars an hour for after hour and weekends. We are asking that you approve both contracts so that we can spread the work fairly and evenly. We will be using DAG Enterprises more for our heavy equipment and Martinez Automotive more for our smaller vehicles. But everyone that did apply will get some work from the county, and that's the way it should be. We ask for your approval.
Motion to approve?
Motion, motion to approve made by Commissioner Libery, second? Seconded by Commissioner Padilla. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, Public Works Division report for the month of January two thousand and eighteen for informational purposes only.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Arnold Lopez here with our monthly report for the month of January. So our lead on number one, operated by Peter V. Hill, had been in the Cal Creek-Pecos area and addressed all the roads up in that area within Pecos, and then moved on to the Oakfield area, where we did all the subdivision up in Oakfield and other area roads as well. And we went into Rivera, and we did a road improvement there, a request for, for base course over on B forty-one E and F. So we applied base course to both of those roads and completely improved those roads. And then Peter went on to Sacatosa area out by the Gonzalez Villanueva, or Gonzalez Ranch Villanueva area, and basically addressing some, some bad areas in, in that area. He is currently in there by Gonzalez Ranch over on B fifty, or B thirty Bean, actually. And then Peter, or Johnny Trujillo, lead operator number two, had been over in the Port Chop Hill Road and basically all the roads around Las Vegas, C twenty-three White Barn Road, and C twenty-five in San Agustín, A six in Los Alamitos, got maintenance pulled on that. And then we went up to Las Dispensas area on A three and addressed some, some areas there that had deteriorated on an improved area. We applied more base course, additional base course to keep these roads, and that improved on status condition. So he is currently over in the Mineral Hill area, a request also on a, on a small road that has a severe hill slope to it. And we applied some base course there to provide some additional traction for the residents within that area. And he is, he should be wrapping that up here in a couple of days. And, but that's pretty much all we have going on.
Any comments, Commissioners Libery?
I want to thank you for that call, but you got on so quickly.
Yeah, and that's, that's a road we.
They called me the next day, and they're like, man, that was, as a matter of fact, that's in your district, I believe.
Yeah. And that's the area that we're applying the base course as well.
Appreciate that. That was, that was a quick response.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Arnold.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Appreciate your hard work. Under item seventeen, resolution number two-dash-thirteen-dash-eighteen, PV authorizing the Board of County Commissioners, San Miguel, to submit the two thousand and eighteen adopted road log to New Mexico Department of Transportation. Mr. Madrid?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is a requirement by the DOT. It's a declaration of what our county roads are, required every year. Mainly, it's when we apply for funding, for millings, or anything from the DOT, they need to have a reference to show that we are in fact asking for resources for county roads, not state roads or private roads or any other types of roads. That's what this is. It's kind of our reference Bible for roads. Matter of fact, you all might want to keep a copy of this in your pocket for when the residents ask you to come and work on our roads. If it's not on this log, it's not a county road. So very briefly, that's why we're asking for your approval today. Mr. Chair, there is one thing that's an inconvenience to you. If it is approved, we are asking that you sign every single page. There's about twenty pages. That's a requirement from the DOT. I apologize for that and ask for your approval.
Same one for each one, sir. There's several signatures required.
That's okay. Anyway. Martinez? Motion to approve by Commissioner Martinez, any second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Padilla, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, I was kidding about that, but I will provide one for each one.
Can you give me a sample? Under item eighteen, request permission for out-of-state travel from transport officer Victoria Lucero.
Sheriff Gold, San Miguel County. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Today, I'd just like to present a real simple request. Mrs. Victoria Lucero will be traveling out of state to attend a evidence technician training. It's one of the only trainings that, that's been available. Missed the one that was in New Mexico, so we're going to have to go out of state. So just requesting your permission for her to attend. so we're going to have to go out of state. So just requesting your permission for her to attend.
What was the location? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Las Vegas, Nevada, February 25th and 28th. I apologize if you couldn't hear me.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Padilla, second. Seconded by Commissioner Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under item 19, Requesting Approval of Revised San Miguel County Sheriff's Office Organizational Chart. Sheriff Gold.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, a real simple request on this one. We're trying to update the organizational charts at the sheriff's office. I wanted to bring it to you periodically. Previously, we had positions for two sergeant positions. Since then, we just brought it back down to a deputy position. And hopefully, within time, we'll be able to maybe increase our staff and get additional supervisors. But at this point in time, I think this is the need of the sheriff's office. One mistake at the bottom right, updated. We have, I believe yours says February the 1st and it should be February 13th for correction. Other than that, we're just requesting your approval for an updated organizational chart.
Motion to approve the revised San Miguel County organizational chart for the sheriff's office. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 7, To Approve Professional Services Agreement between San Miguel County and Holcomb Law Office. Ms. Sedio?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. So it's time to renew our annual professional service agreement with Holcomb Law Office. Holcomb Law Office has been with us since 2010 in representing us in labor management issues and dealing with the union. And so I went out for RFQs, requests for quotes for services. Holcomb Law Office did provide the lowest quote. I received a quote from Moody and Warner in Albuquerque, in which they quoted 275 per hour. The second quote was from Jackson Lewis, also in Albuquerque, and they quoted 261 per hour. Holcomb Law quoted 185 per hour. So we are getting the best deal for Ms. Tina Holcomb's services. So I am requesting your approval of the Holcomb Law Office Professional Service Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Moved.
By Commissioner Librery, seconded by Commissioner Padilla. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 21, Request for Approval of 2018-2019 San Miguel County Organizational Chart. Ms. Sedio?
So in your packets, you have updates to the organizational chart and most of them are cosmetic changes. There's basically one functional change that Dr. Martinez mentioned earlier, and that is the removal of the functions between the fleet, building, and safety compliance officer, and we're moving maintenance to report directly to the county manager. The other ones were basic changes that you've already received and approved, like the change in the drop description for fire marshal. So now the organizational chart reflects fire marshal. And I think that was basically it on the changes for the organizational chart. So I'm requesting your approval on the changes for the 2018-2019 organizational chart.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Padilla, seconded by Commissioner Librery. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 22, Personal Actions or Changes for the Month of January 2018. Ms. Sedio?
And lastly, in your packet, you have the changes that have taken place for the month of January of 2018. And I'm requesting your approval and ratification of these personnel actions or changes.
Need a motion to approve the personal actions submitted by Ms. Sedio? Motion? I'm sorry, is it information item? Motion made by Commissioner Librery, is that correct? Second? Seconded by Commissioner Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 23, Solid Waste Ordinance Number SM-2-010-04-0R. Mr. Garcia?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So, as you know, solid waste billing has been moved to the treasurer's office. So myself and the other three clerks are working that along with our treasurer duties. So along that line, we discovered that there's practices that are being done that don't match with the ordinance. So what we've done, we've requested a review and we decided that we do need to update the ordinance. What we want to do is make a few changes as soon as possible to it and eventually, over the next few years, make this into an ordinance that makes our solid waste department a moneymaker for the county. It's going to take a lot of work and a lot of hours to put it through. But I think within the next, maybe 10 years, we can actually see a department that, you know, is actually bringing in revenue for the county. That's what our ultimate goal is. But for now, we want to make sure that we make the changes necessary to work with the customers that we have as far as payment arrangements and adjustments that, you know, we have to be able to do for them that they're just not in the ordinance right now.
Good luck, Mr. Garcia. It's going to be a big undertaking. Informational purposes, item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 22, Bank Transfers for the Month of January.
24.
You represent...
Yes, I'll be here for this.
Okay. Mr. Garcia?
Okay, so regular payroll transfers for January. We had detention center, $58,480.37. General fund, $186,611.24. For total transfer into the payroll account of $245,091.61. February 1st, that was the last pay period. It was done actually on the 31st of January. So we had detention center, $55,463.67. General fund, $180,121.31 for a total of $235,584.98. There were a couple of wire transfers. January 17th, we had a wire transfer of $28,835.61. That was from the general fund to the detention center. It was from the New Mexico Administrative Offices of the Courts. We also had another transfer on the 25th of January, $4,193.80. That one was to the detention center, to the general fund account.
For informational purposes only. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Item number 25, General Entry for the Month of December 2017. Ms. Beheal? Okay. Everybody get that? Okay, item number 26, Reshoot Report for the Month of December 2017. Arnold Lopez and Beheal? Okay. Item number 27, Accounts Payable Report for the Period of December 28, 2017 through January 31, 2018, and the December 2017 Housing Payment Register. Ms. Beheal?
January 31, 2018, and the December 2017 Housing Payment Register. Present payments processed through the Finance Office and Bernardino County. On behalf of San Miguel County, request is to review and approve.
Motion to approve. Moved by Commissioner Padilla, second. Seconded by Commissioner Librery. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 28, Indigent Burial Claims. For a couple of burials, Ms. Lopez and Beheal?
The Finance Office has received, reviewed, and processed two indigent burial claims. One from Daniel's Family Funeral Service and another from SMI Albuquerque Assets LLC, each for $600. Action requested to ratify the indigent burial claims.
Need a motion to approve the indigent burial claims?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Martinez, seconded by Commissioner Padilla. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 29, FY16-17 Audit and Financial Statement.
The county received notification from the state auditor stating the audit report has been received and a review has been completed. The audit report is to be presented to the county commission by the independent public accountant to a quorum of a governing authority at a meeting held in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, and the presentation should be documented in the minutes of meeting. I would like to introduce Luis Gomez, Senior Accountant, and Ben Martinez, Audit Manager, from Carr, Rigs, and Ingram, formerly RPC Consultants. They are here to present our fiscal year 16-17 audit.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm here, my name is Ben Martinez. I'm an audit manager at Carr, Rigs, and Ingram, formerly RPC, and Consultants. I'll talk about that in just a moment, about that merger. I'm here on behalf of Danny Martinez, our audit partner, who was the partner on this audit, but his wife is expecting almost any day now, so he really can't leave Albuquerque at the moment. So I'm here to present on his behalf of the audit for San Miguel County and the results thereof. And again, I'm here with Luis. Just to start with, we passed out some handouts and I'll go through those for your information. Going over the timeline for the audit, it's a fairly compressed timeline that we go through. We signed our engagement letter in August. We began planning the audit in July after the audit was awarded to us. We were out the weeks of September 4th and September 18th. So that's when we were out doing all of our test work. We delivered our preliminary findings on November 8th and our financial statement draft November 28th. And then our auditors' report was dated November 29th. And then it was submitted to the state, and now we're here to present the results of that here to you today. When we talk about the audit report, in the financial statements, there's three main reports that come from us. The rest of the 145 pages of this audit report are really all the county's information. So it's all the numbers and all the... Everything described within is really the county's information. We're just there to give an opinion on it and make sure that it's in line with accounting standards in the US. So when it comes to your auditors' report, that's the first report we give. We did give an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion available. And what that says is that your financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with accounting principles in the United States of America and that there were no areas where we could not give that opinion, where there was question, or there was a material uncertainty about a balance. So the financial statements themselves did receive an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. So that's our initial report, is the auditors' report. We have two other reports. One report is the Generally Accepted Government Auditing Standards Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Compliance or Other Matters. Now, in this report, we don't really give an opinion, but that's where we have to list the findings as part of the audit. And we do have some findings listed there, and we'll go over the detail of those in just a moment. But we had one material weakness, which is, it is the higher level of finding. And when we go over the details of that, you'll see that the county is working to resolve that or that was actually associated with the software transition. So more than likely, that should resolve in the next year. We did have two findings listed that were significant deficiencies. They're a lower level of finding than a material weakness, but they're something that should still merit attention to the commission. And then we had five findings that are under NMSA, the statutes of the state of New Mexico. And in the state of New Mexico, there's, it's a zero reporting threshold for findings. So we do have to report anything we find in our audit, whether it's, if it's maybe a purchase order that went $5 over. We do have to report that if it came to our attention. There's basically a zero reporting threshold. So any, anything like that, you know, a fund goes $10 over budget and there wasn't an amendment, we do have to report that. So some of those findings might feel small, but really, there's that zero reporting threshold. So we do have to report all that and just, you know, bring it to the attention and put them in the financial statements. The other report that we give an opinion on is the Report on Compliance with Federal Requirements under the Uniform Guidance. And we do give an opinion on that compliance. And this year, the county's major program was the Section 8 voucher program. And that, there were no findings in that, and there was also an unmodified opinion over compliance. So that means that the federal program there that we tested, everything was in order there as well. I would turn it over to Luis for just a moment, and he'll go over some of the financial statement activity highlights.
Thank you. So I'm Luis Gomez. I'm the senior accountant that worked on the audit for San Miguel County. So I oversaw the day-to-day, kind of when we were in the field here, and guided the team and provided the draft of the financial statement to the finance department. And so in the financial statement, we noted that the total assets in the statement in that position have increased by 3.6 million. The big increase was in restricted cash, and it was kind of offset by a decrease of 350,000 prepaid expenses. But most of that cash was related to the new debt that was acquired during the year. Total liabilities also increased by about 6 million, from 17.9 to 23.9 million. A big part of this is related to the net pension liability, which isn't really related to something that you guys did right away. It was actually done by an actuary. And so this is related to the para. So that was the majority of the increase for in the statement in that position. As far as activities, so revenues and expenses, the financial statement saw a decrease of about 1.8 million from 17.9 to 16.1 million, largely related to a decrease in operating and capital grants of about 2.5 million and an increase in the charges for services, which was about $500,000. The expense side, we saw expenses increasing by about $800,000 from 15.5 to 16.3 million, which was largely related to increase in public safety services. Now, as far as the actual audit, there were two major audit areas that we spent a significant amount of time in. The first one is accounts receivable and related revenues. A big portion of the county's operations are related to the collection and limits of property taxes to the other entities. And this is where we found some more time spent on working with this, specifically due to the fact that you guys had a software conversion during the year. So the software conversions are always a little bit rocky, and we see that all across the states. So because of this, we performed certain procedures over the information that got transferred from one system to the other to make sure that everything was transferred correctly. We gained an understanding of the process in the Treasurers Department in order to ensure that all of the customer receivable balances were accurately transferred, that any annual adjustments made and any adjustments made that had to be done by hand were done properly and that they were properly reviewed by somebody unauthorized. We gained an understanding of the software. It was, it came to our attention that there was a software crash during the year. So that's something that we targeted heavily to make sure that there were no losses by the county and that all the information that wasn't captured through the system at that time was actually recorded after the system was restored. We also did some testing and confirmation of some of your larger state share taxes, like the gross receipts taxes that you guys receive from the Department of Taxation and Revenue, and did analytical procedures over revenue balances to kind of support our substantive test work a little more. And we also did recalculations on, uh, and we proposed certain adjustments related to the county property tax fiduciary portion. It just means the system didn't have, um, an account specifically related to the portion that the county needs to remit to the other entity, so we proposed a, uh, a material adjustment for that. The other, uh, area where we spent a significant amount of time was, uh, related to capital assets for the, for, uh, similar reasons, so due to the software conversion, there were, uh, there were certain amounts that didn't transfer correctly, and so there were some discrepancies when we were looking at the asset listing to tie the beginning balance to what was reported in the financial statements, the audit of financial statements for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, so there were some discrepancies there. There were other discrepancies too that also came to our attention from the Finance Department, so it was actually the county who identified some of those discrepancies as well, um, and on our end, it was mostly related to those beginning balances, so we worked together with the Finance Department also to come up with the correct number that should have been there, and proposed an adjustment, uh, which was about twenty-four thousand dollars to get those balances, and, and this was in the net, so this was twenty-four thousand dollars when you consider the capital assets and the related, uh, accumulated depreciation, and that's out to about twenty-four thousand, but the balances were a little bit bigger in the middle, um, but we worked together to get those going correctly, and, um, Finance has been working towards making sure that those are, uh, maintained adequately, uh, thereon. Now, Ben, we'll talk to you guys about some of the audit findings that we had for the year.
So going, going over a couple of the audit findings, I did mention we had one material weakness, which is, a material weakness is a condition such that if controls are operating as they're designed, there is a chance that there could be, uh, a material misstatement in the financial statements, and the material weakness we had was, uh, over the software conversion, there were some, um, it, it's noted in the finding that there were some, you know, there was a crash for a couple of days, and in having to reconstruct that data, it did take a lot of manual entry, um, you know, when we did our test work, we did find that, that there was no, no missing, or that the, the data was recovered and, and adjustments were, were made, but there, there weren't controls in place at the time just to try to make sure that that, that happened and that some of those adjustments were reviewed maybe after the fact and not, not close to when they were, when they were booked. Now, looking at that going forward, because you're not going to convert software every single year, you know, hopefully this is something that can resolve in this coming year, you know, if there's no more, no more issues that kind of are lingering from that trans, transfer of software, sometimes those issues can linger from year to year, but hopefully, you know, the transition's gone smoothly since, since that, that those initial, uh, bumps did occur. A little lower than a, a material weakness is a significant deficiency, which the definition is just something that does not rise to the level of material weakness, but still merits attention by the commission, so, uh, it's just a, a lower level finding. Uh, there were two of those, uh, one was a repeated finding related to the adjustments to the agency property tax receivables, which as Luis mentioned, there was a, uh, an adjustment at the end of the year to the amount that the county was holding, uh, to be remitted to other entities, either the cities or the school districts, it's those property taxes and the property taxes receivable that the county holds, um, for those other entities, so there were some adjustments there, um, and that, that's been a finding, it looks like since two thousand and fourteen, but now that, you know, you're in a new system, you know, going forward, you know, those, those things might be able to be solved. Um, and then we did have, uh, as Luis mentioned, there were some adjustments to the capital assets, uh, we, we classified that as a significant deficiency because that is a large balance on your, on your financial statements, but now that those differences have been found, um, you know, should be able to, to move forward from year to year within the, the new system, you know, on a constant basis and not have, not, hopefully not have that issue going forward, so, um, just some of those hiccups that can happen with, with software, um, software conversions. And then there, there were five other, other non-compliance findings, um, these are compliance that, you know, that I mentioned, we do have to say because, uh, in the state of New Mexico, we do have a zero reporting threshold. We had some, some small adjustments to the proposed, uh, accounts payable, uh, journal entries, it was just a couple of items that, um, I believe, uh, were found that should have been accrued that were, were maybe not included on that list. It wasn't a material amount, so, uh, but because we did find a slight difference in what was proposed, we did, um, have to note that, you know, finding. Uh, we had a budget over expenditure, um, and, which was, you know, a DWI grant fund in the amount of five hundred dollars, uh, for one of the funds. There was, uh, tracking of fringe benefits, uh, when it comes to take-home vehicles, there was, um, some issues there, we didn't think it, it rose to, um, a material amount, but because we do have to note anything, anything that comes to our attention, um, and, uh, tracking is, has been put in place to, uh, uh, work between the, the different departments to make sure that any of those vehicles that are taken home that should be fringe benefits are properly tracked, so, uh, going, going forward, you know, these, these hopefully will resolve in the, in the coming year. One of the items, uh, was, uh, talking about budgeting, and when you do your initial budgets, um, you can appropriate prior year cash to cover any shortfall between budgeted revenues and budgeted expenses, and in one fund, there was, um, it, there was, uh, about a thou- uh, sixteen hundred dollars budgeted more than the actual cash balance, so it was, it was a small amount, not a, not a material amount, but, uh, because you've, you, in the state of New Mexico, we're not allowed to deficit budget for local, local entities, um, those bu- down, the budgets have to be balanced either through revenues or through existing cash or, uh, accounts receivable. And then the final finding, uh, related to, um, the ten-year tax report that's required by state statutes for the, um, to be presented with the financial statements, and that's been a finding since two thousand and four, I think there was a problem with the old system, uh, for tracking those receivables for ten years as required by the, by state statutes, um, and, you know, going forward, it sounds like the system can track that, so that finding should resolve itself as that data, you know, builds and accumulates in that system, but the finding could, could stay for a bit just because you don't have maybe that historical data going back those full ten years, but that, um, that, that's a finding that, uh, in the years I've audited, it, it's been an issue, you know, with some of the older software systems, and, and as people are transitioning to newer systems, that finding's clearing, but I've seen that at several of the counties I've worked at over time, and, and they've worked to resolve it, so I'm, I'm, I'm sure it can be, can be resolved, resolved here as well. There were, uh, several prior year findings that were, uh, resolved, um, I've kind of talked about any that were repeated, but there was a finding cleared over stale-dated checks, um, there were some segregation of duty issues for wire transfers that were also resolved, so, um, that's always good to resolve findings. There was, uh, finding over inmate trust reconciliation or bank reconciliations, that was resolved. There was, uh, some issues with the accumulated depreciation, uh, that was resolved, um, lack of review over bank reconciliation was also resolved, uh, from the, the FY sixteen audit, as well as, uh, there were some information system rights, uh, in your system, uh, it was a finding in two thousand and sixteen that was also resolved, um, and then federal approval for changes in a scope of work, uh, that one was also resolved as well, so there were a lot of, a lot of findings resolved, there was a lot of progress on FY sixteen findings in, in the current year, so that's always, always good to see as well. You know, in, in conclusion, um, you know, Danny, the Partner on this, you know, asked me to say that the, the team, you know, was great to work with, I'm not sure Luis, you know, can, can speak to that too, um, but they were very helpful and, and really good to work with, and we got the audit submitted timely, uh, this year. You know, on behalf of, of the firm, I'd just like to thank you for, uh, for choosing us to do your audit, uh, for FY two thousand and seventeen, um, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the, the commission, to serve the county. You know, we value that, this relationship, the, the firm we're in has been in New Mexico since nineteen ninety-eight, and, you know, we, we just really appreciate the opportunity to serve local communities. Now, one more thing to, that we, uh, that did occur right toward the end of the audit, RPC CPAs and consultants merged into, uh, a larger accounting firm, Carr, Riggs and Ingram, which is, uh, a national accounting firm, um, it's the, on, in the top twenty, it's, I believe, number nineteen in the nation, but, you know, so, going forward, you know, we will work under the Carr, Riggs and Ingram name, um, but we did want to let you know that that, that really won't change your experience, it'll just open, uh, further opportunities, uh, to the county. All of our operations will still be here out of our, our offices here in New Mexico, you, you won't get a different audit team out of, you know, some other state, you'll still deal with Luis and you'll still deal with Danny and, you know, I can, I might be part of, part of the audit on the managerial level, um, so it's still going to be local, going to be local people, um, but it does open out, open newer opportunities in the realms of IT services, um, you know, that Carr, Riggs and Ingram has a very large specialty in a lot of different IT auditing and IT, uh, IT areas, and that's, that's something that, that, you know, we'll make available to any of our clients because that's the next big frontier is IT threats, um, so we feel that, that through that merger, we are in a much better place, uh, a much better place to serve those needs going forward, and we can still serve, you know, your audit needs with the same, the same people who've been doing it for, uh, for this year and, and hopefully going forward. And again, I'd just like to say thank you, uh, I, my contact information is on the, uh, the handouts that we gave, so if you, uh, if you'd like to get ahold of myself or Luis, or if you have any questions, we can answer those, uh, and again, just thank you for having us perform your audit this year.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment, uh, thank you for all the hard work you did. I know you've been here a long time doing the audit, and, uh, I know that we're not perfect yet, but we're striving as a commission and as an administration to get there, and now hopefully at some point we'll get to, to be the perfect, uh, county, but, uh, thank you very much for your, for your audit, it's very important to us to have an audit like that, and it came out, I think it came out like a very good audit, as far as that goes, but, uh, we strive to be perfect.
And, uh, everybody was very receptive to our, to our suggestions, um, everybody was very helpful during the whole process, so it made the audit a lot smoother, we know that, being the first year that we were with you all, it was going to be a little bit rocky because new auditors, new software, all of that was going to get there, we managed to all work together, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You noticed in your findings that a lot of these things were, were due to software problems, conversion problems and things like that, and, and, uh, all of those were resolved, is that correct? With the majority of?
So the ones related to the software conversion, this upcoming year, when we come back after June, um, we'll need to make sure that those types of errors aren't there anymore, we don't anticipate them to be, because the transition was what made that, uh, the, the issue, um, but we're still going to have to, like, we are required to, by San Miguel to come back and double check that all of that type of information, um, is still accurate, but I don't anticipate those coming back again if, if there weren't any other glitches in the system.
Commissioner Martinez, any comments, questions?
Just want to say thank you.
Commissioner Levarie?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number thirty, cash balance report. Ms. Fajee?
This is to report the November reconciled cash balances for informational purposes only.
All right. Good at the cash balance report, okay. Item thirty-one, uh, Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash two dash thirteen dash F1, authorizing integration of Fund Three Thirty-two. Ms. Fajee?
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero two dash thirteen dash F1, to create Fund Three Thirty-two to be used for PW twenty-seven of the FEMA four one nine seven disaster project. The county of San Miguel has received a sub-grant agreement for disaster in two thousand and fourteen. It will consist of federal and state funds and will require a county match. The purpose of the fund is to account for expenditures associated with the September two thousand and fourteen floods affecting the San Hedonimo Bridge. Action requested to review and approve fund authority.
Motion to approve. Moved by Commissioner Padilla, seconded by Commissioner Levarie, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty-two, Resolution dash two thousand and eighteen dash two dash thirteen F2, Resolution. Ms. Fajee?
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero two dash thirteen dash F2. The county received a sub-grant agreement FEMA four one nine seven dash zero three one for the San Hedonimo Bridge replacement. A recommendation is being made to transfer sixty thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-four cents from the general fund and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents from the FEMA DR four one nine seven Fund Two Thirty-two to the newly created FEMA four one nine seven dash zero three one. Fund Three Thirty-two and to budget for the federal and state revenue of six hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, and finally to budget for the expenditure of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Action requested to review and approve.
Motion to approve Resolution dash two thousand, uh, two thousand and eighteen dash zero two dash thirteen dash F2. Moved by Commissioner Padilla, seconded by Commissioner Levarie, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager, any reason for us to retire to executive session?
Chairman, members of the commission, at this time I'm requesting, uh, executive close session under limited personnel matters as permitted by NMSA nineteen seventy-eight section ten dash fifteen dash one, as amended of the Open Meetings Act, more specifically personnel matters regarding specific county departments, office of emergency management. In addition, attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation as permitted by Mexico S.A. nineteen seventy-eight section ten dash fifteen dash one, as amended in the Open Meetings Act, more specifically economic development corporation and to Mario or San Miguel.
Motion to return to executive session? Who, but, which is really second?
Second.
Second by? Roll call, we have a roll call, please?
Yes? Here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.